Hammond City Council Meeting is now called to order. Will you please stand for the pledge allegiance and invocation given by Councilman Hitt?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you just saying thank you, Lord. Thank you for the blood that washes and cleanses all unrighteousness. We ask that you be in the midst of this meeting and cleanse us, Lord, so that we can do what's necessary to move our city forward. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Mr. President?
Mayor?
Thank you for letting me speak, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind the council, I know that Councilman Markovich has been talking a lot about trying to retelevise the council meetings. The last council meeting was a dry run for Go Hammond TV, and I just wanted to let the council know and let the audience know that right now, we've got two cameras focused on the city council. The meeting is live on www.gohammondtv.com. GoHammond.TV, excuse me. GoHammond.TV, not .com. GoHammond.TV. It's live and it will be archived. So, I wanted to let you know, Mr. Eskimie and Mr. Jacobs right now are filming, and it will appear on GoHammond.TV. So, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions about this? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Number two on the agenda is roll call.
Markovich.
Here.
Pasalic.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Poland.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Enosa.
Here.
Hicks.
Here. Let the record reflect nine, all are present. Number three on the agenda is reading of the minutes. Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President?
Councilman Opinker.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from 3:14 of 11.
Been motioned by Councilman Opinker, second by Councilman Hossa, that we accept the minutes as read. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any nay, motion passed. Number four on the agenda is approval of claims. Approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, March 9th, 2011 through March 23rd, 2011 for council meeting, March 28th, 2011. Beginning with claims dated 3/15/11 and ending with claims dated 3/22/11, claim number 1176 through claim number 1437 inclusive.
Second?
Been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we accept claims dated March 9th, 2011 through March 23rd, 2011 for council meeting scheduled, March 28th. Starting with claim 1176, ending in claim 1438. Was there any discussion on the claim?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
I'd like to have a couple additions. Claim number 1439, $1,621.50. Hotel for Miller, Doty and Long, Southern Police Institute, Chief Executive Leadership Training. Claim number 1440, $2,025. Southern Police Institute for Leadership Course, Miller, Doty and Long, Southern Police Institute. I so move.
Second?
Been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we amend in claims 1439 and 1440. One claim for $1,629.50, and the other claim, what was the total, Councilman?
$2,025.
$2,025.
$2,225.
Oh, $2,025.
$2,025 for the Hammond Police Department. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? Roll call vote on the amendment.
Markovich?
Yes.
Pasalic?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Poland?
Yes.
Opinker?
Yes.
Enosa?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes. Motion passes, nine in favor. Now claims as read.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
Just for point of record, claim number 1436 is for Greenleaf Web Studios, $9,955.81. Mayor's gaming and nets because of this web stuff going on, just for point of information.
That is claim number what?
1436.
And you said that to say what, Councilman?
They're doing the webcast, and there's a claim here tonight, $9,955.81. That's paid to this company, Greenleaf Web Studios, that's doing the internet and the web so forth and that. I'm just making that a point of information, that we are paying to have somebody do a lot of this.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion on the claims? Any other discussion on the claims? Any other discussion on the claims? Roll call vote on the claims.
As amended. Markovich?
Yes.
Pasalic?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Poland?
Yes.
Opinker?
Yes.
Enosa?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes. Motion passes, nine in favor, zero after. Number five is public hearings, there are none. Number six is communications. Are there any communications? I did receive one from Keenest Deshawn Dillon, "To whom it may concern, I am pleased to announce that I have been invited into the National Honor Society. I am a junior at Hammond High School where I am a part of the Hammond High Bible Club, kickoff mentors, band football and HHS track team. I am a junior deacon at my church as well as an active choir member and tenor. After high school, I plan to attend college and pursue a degree in medicine. You may or may not know that you have been instrumental in helping me become the young man I am today, and with your help, I believe I have a good chance to be an introduced into the great society of gifted honor students. I have also been honored to be a part of the following organizations, Member Priority, Congressional Student Leadership, National Youth Leadership Forum of Medicine, People-to-People Student Ambassador's Program, YAAE, Young African-American Entrepreneurs, National Helpers Organization, Torch for Tots, Home Work Helpers Incorporated, and in the past, I have also participated in Legos Robotics Chess Team, Dillon More Lawn Care and Snow Removals. Sincerely, Keenest Keenest Deshawn Dillon, 1105 May Street, Hammond, Indiana, 46320." Congratulations. Keep up the good work. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Number seven is committee reports. Committee reports.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kalwinski?
Councilor Ho will be bringing out, I believe, 11-6, 11-9 and 11-11.
Councilor Ho bringing out 11-6, 11-9 and 11-11. Is there any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Number eight is ordinances on third, reading and final passage.
Ordinance number 11-1 sponsored-
Just a few moments ago, we got a meeting going over here, Councilman. Thank you. You can continue.
Ordinance 11-6 sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski, and ordinance amending ordinance 5085, known as section 113.41 of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to garage sales and yard sales in the city of Hammond.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kalwinski?
Move for third reading and final passage of 11-6.
Second?
It's been motioned by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Opinker, that we move 11-6 on this final reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, could we have that read in its entirety?
Clark, daughter, can you read that ordinance in its entirety, please?
Whereas section 5085 of the Hammond Code of Ordinance regulates garage sales and yard sales in residentially zoned property in the city of Hammond, and whereas, yard sales and garage sales, while beneficial on an occasional basis, do increase traffic, cause parking issues, noise and litter in residential areas, and whereas, frequent and constant garage sales are in fact, actually retail operations that are better located in commercial zoning areas, and whereas, and section 94.075 prohibits the affixing of any notice, poster or paper to city of Hammond light poles, public utility poles or street signs, and garage sale and yard sale signs are frequently affixed to city of Hammond property, causing damage to those fixtures, visual blight and obstruction of driver's view, and now therefore be ordained by the common council of city of Hammond that ordinance 5085 be amended and section 113.41 be now read as follow. A, no garage or yard sale shall be allowed from the same parcel of residential property located in the city of Hammond more than one time a year. The owner of the property may petition the Board of Works for a permit to conduct a garage sale, which will be good for two consecutive days. The Board of Works may, in its discretion, grant permits for additional sales or approved events which include a garage sale. B, persons wishing to have a garage sale must first obtain a permit from the Hammond Board of Public Works and Safety prior to conducting the sale. Permits will be given at the regularly scheduled meeting of that body on Thursdays and may be obtained by correspondence or in person at the meeting. The Board of Works will issue a written permit which is to be in the possession of the person conducting the garage sale if requested by police and/or code enforcement. C, notices for garage and yard sales may not be posted on city property such as light poles, street signs or utility poles. Signs may be placed in the parkway of the property conducting the sale provided they do not obscure traffic. Illegally placed signs may be removed and disposed of by the city. D, violations of this ordinance may be enforced by the inspections Department and/or Police Department, and each day constitutes a continuing offense which may be abated by any lawful means by the city of Hammond. E, penalty, see section 10.99. Now it be further ordained that herein ordinance shall have full force and effect from and after passage, approval by the council, signing by the president thereof, and approval and signing of the mayor.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Page 2C, I'd like to make an amendment, please. Section C, the second line, starting with, signs may be placed in the parkway of the property conducting the sale, provided they do not obscure traffic. I would like to amend that sentence out, please.
Second?
motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali, that you amend out section C where signs will not be allowed?
Yes, just the second sentence of section C.
Second sentence of section C, amend out. Is there any discussion of amending out of the language of the ordinance? Any discussion?
Spitali?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Any discussion on amending out of section? Roll call vote on the amending out of that section.
Markovich?
Yes.
Pasalic?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
No.
Poland?
Yes.
Opinker?
Yes.
Enosa?
Yes.
Hicks?
No. Councilman, would you like to vote on this?
Yes.
Seven yeses and two nos. Motion passes, amend out. Now I'm back to the original motion.
Mr. President?
Councilman Enahosa.
I do see a problem with people having garage sales every weekend, but I think one time is hitting the residents of Hammond a little too hard. I'm gonna put an amendment in there under the first page, under A, where it says one, I want to put two. I so move.
Second?
It's been motioned by Councilman Enahosa and second by Councilman Salinas that we amend in on the first page where there was one and put two. Where there was one, put two. Is there any discussion on the amending in?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kalwinski?
In section A, the last line provides a provision for that, sorry for the repeat. The Board of Works may, in its discretion, grant permits for additional sales or approve events which include garage sales. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Enahosa?
I'll continue with my motion, and I believe I got a second.
Been motioned, second, from one to two. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Any other discussion on the amendment? Any other discussion on the amendment? Roll call vote on the amendment?
Markovich?
Yes.
Pasalic?
No.
Spitali?
No.
Kalwinski?
No.
Salinas?
Yes.
Poland?
No.
Opinker?
No.
Enosa?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes. Five nos, four yeses. Motion fails.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
In caucus, Councilman Kalwinski said that they had several complaints, and I like to see the petitions or anything of that nature of people that wanted to file complaints and who they are. Usually when something like this changes at a Board of Works meeting, there's a petition going out with signatures and people saying that they are against garage sales, or they want a stop sign put up, or they want one taken down. I have yet to see anything where all of these complaints are and who made these complaints, and I'd like to see the signatures, people that are in favor of this. Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kalwinski?
No petition for giving me informal discussions led me to believe that people were not in favor of more yard sales. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Poland?
In the 4th District, many of my constituents, especially last summer, had spoke about the issues that were rising from too many garage sales in our area, the traffic jams. It was not a good thing. I had a lot of complaints about this, and I'm going by what many of my constituents in the 4th District had said.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
Can somebody please say what the penalty's gonna be, what it's gonna cost? It says 10.99 penalty. Does anybody know what the penalty's gonna be?
Sponsor of the ordinance should know that. Who's the sponsor?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kalwinski?
That is the same rule of law regarding penalty for any citations up to and including 2,500. It can begin at a citation and work its way up in cost, all the way up to and including 2,500. Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
I'm gonna read the general penalty. 10.99. Whatever in this code or in any ordinance of the city or in any rule of regulation promulgated by an officer or agency thereof, under authority invested by law or ordinance, any act is prohibited or is made declared unlawful or an offense, or doing of an act is required, or the failure to do any act is declared to be unlawful where no specific penalty is provided thereof, the violation of such a provision of this code, ordinance, rule or regulation, shall be punished by a fine not exceeding $2,500. Every day, any violation of this code and ordinance, rule or regulation shall continue, shall constitute a separate offense. In cases where a previous conviction exists under Division A of this section, the violation of the second or subsequent provision of code, ordinance, rule or regulations shall be punished by a fine not exceeding $7,500. We really want to go ahead after people that are trying to make money and get rid of their things, people losing their jobs, and we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna fine them $2,500 or $7,500. Thank God, you know, for an ordinance like this. Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kalwinski?
This is the same penalty formula that's used for all penalties in the city. If your grass is too high, if you have weeds on your border, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's a little bit of showmanship and grandstanding to suggest 2,500 and 7,500 would be given out to every person as a first offense. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Enahosa?
I believe this is Hammond, Indiana. This isn't Munster, Indiana. This isn't Beverly Hills. This is Hammond, Indiana, where around 70% of the kids that go to Hammond schools live under the poverty level. I don't care if it's a $500 fine. There's people out there that would like to make a living and have a couple yard sales. I'm gonna make a complaint myself. I do not like to see somebody have a yard sale every week, week after week after week after week. I'm against that. So, I'd like to make an amendment under A that we make it three instead of one.
There's a motion for amendment to put in three. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Enahosa, second by Councilman Salinas that we add in three. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? I will say this, that in regards to the number of residents we have in our city, you know, it's some people's way of means of providing for their families, and, you know, you don't want to take that resource away from them, although some people may feel it may be a nuisance of some kind to continuously do these type of sales on their property, but the reality of it is, is the people are simply trying to make a living, some of them, just to put food on their table. So, you should have some compassion in regards to that, and that's all I'll speak to in regards to that. So, you know, every decision you make in regards to what you vote on will ultimately be decided by the voters at some point or another. So, there you have it. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call vote on the amendment?
Markovich?
Yes.
Pasalic?
No.
Spitali?
No.
Kalwinski?
No.
Salinas?
Yes.
Poland?
No.
Opinker?
No.
Enosa?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes. Motion fails, five nos, four yeses.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
We already have a garage sale ordinance in place, and under 113.4 definition, for the purpose of this subchapter, the following definition shall apply unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meeting, garage sale. A sale of household goods, wares, furniture and/or clothes conducted from a residentially zoned property. Now, we are all in the caucus here, and we've got a letter from all the building trades that we want to go ahead and give jobs to Hammond people. And we got this letter from some lawyer there, about three or four pages long, with all the threats of lawsuits and everything and all of that, because they're saying that, you know, we want Hammond people to be working, you know, this is basically like the same thing here. But, they threaten with lawsuits. Now, we're getting into civil lawsuits, because now you're gonna tell your own homeowner that you cannot even do anything with your own property. You cannot sell anything? You cannot get rid of it? What's going on here? Your own personal property, you're gonna have a garage sale on your own home, it's not like they're doing a business or anything, it's not zoned, you know, for business, but now they're telling you, and I'm sure with all these people here, and being that it's an election time, so you get all these goofy ordinances that come about now, that somebody's gonna go ahead and get a hold of civil rights, and they're gonna file suit in federal court, that they're telling people now that they cannot even do things on their own property. God help us.
Totally ridiculous.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
I make a motion to table this ordinance, 11-6. Second?
It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Enahosa that we table. Roll call vote on the table.
Markovich, yes. Pasalic?
No.
Spitali?
No.
Kalwinski?
No.
Salinas?
Yes.
Poland?
No.
Opinker?
No.
Enosa?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes. Motion fails, five no, four yeses. Back to the original motion.
Mr. President?
Councilman Mark, uh, Enahosa?
Well, maybe I, maybe I'm not seeing what I'm gonna see. Maybe, maybe people from Munster and people from Beverly Hills are gonna move to Hammond, Indiana, where it's only one garage sale per year. So, maybe there's a plan that I haven't heard about, that everybody's gonna be moving to Hammond, Indiana from Sherrville and Munster. I don't, I don't see that happening. There's, there's a lot, a lot of poor out there, there's a lot of people losing their houses out there. There's a lot of people would love to have at least two garage sales per year, one in the spring and one in the fall. I think this is ridiculous. I am voting no for this.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
You know, it's this Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association and Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch, I think, are the ones that are the instigators for this. I'd be willing to ask the Crime Watch group from Whiting-Robertsdale, that what is the ordinance that Whiting has for garage sales, just to seeing how that this is our sister city there, that what is the garage sale ordinances that Whiting have there? I would like if somebody can come forth and tell us about that, seeing how this is being predicated for the Crime Watch meeting.
Are you requesting that, Councilman?
Well, we have representatives here from the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch, I mean, I'm sure that they can probably go ahead and give us answers what Whiting has for their garage sales.
Point of order. What's your point of order, Councilman Kalwinski?
That by Robert's rules of order, no member can speak more than twice on one question on the same day. Mr. Markovich has now spoken four times. I would say that there's no more room for him to discuss this or debate this issue.
Point well taken. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
So, what are we saying here? Now, we're putting a gag order on people to speak?
Right of order.
We're gonna put a gag order on people to speak?
Wait a minute, I'm running the meeting, let's be respectful. Councilman, are you done speaking to the issue?
I just thought I took a recess each time. You know, when you're gonna start telling people that they're not allowed to speak...
We have to govern the, Councilman Kalwinski, now you're out of order. I am running the meeting, please allow- I am running the meeting. Please allow each individual to speak. Your point was well taken. I understand that, and he knows that, so. That is, in fact, the way the meeting should be ran. So that's what Robert says. I know that. So I done already corrected that. I said, "Point well taken." Is there any other discussion or any other one of my colleagues would like to speak to this subject matter? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call vote on the motion. And, and Clerk Golick, can you clarify that for my colleagues who may not know what we're voting on now?
Ordinance eleven dash six, as amended. The amendment was, that passed, was on Section C to strike the second sentence. The council is voting on the ordinance as amended.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call vote on the motion.
Markovich.
No.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
No.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes.
Henosa.
No.
Higgs.
No. Motion passes. Five in favor, four noes.
Ordinance eleven dash nine, sponsored by Councilman Opinkar. And ordinance amending ordinance ninety-sixty, eighty-three twenty-seven, amended by ordinance eighty-five seventy, amended by ordinance eighty-six zero three, amended by ordinance eighty-six sixty-six, and amended by ordinance eighty-seven hundred, also known as Section ninety-six point one-five-two of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to rental registration in the city of Hammond and student housing.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinkar.
I'd like to call for a third and final vote on eleven dash nine.
Second. It's been motioned by Councilman Opinkar, second by Councilman Spatelli, that we pass on third and final reading, eleven dash nine. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinkar.
This ordinance is, uh, to protect the, um, students at Purdue that, um, come here from other countries. Um, and it keeps them from landlords from throwing a bunch of them in these units at, you know, seven, eight people in one, uh, single-family dwelling home, and this is to protect them students.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call vote on eleven dash nine.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Eight in favor and one absent.
Ordinance eleven dash eleven, sponsored by Councilman Higgs. And ordinance prohibit the storage of vehicles on lots which were formerly used car lots.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
I move for final passage of eleven dash eleven.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Hinoza, second by Councilman Spatelli, that we pass on third and final reading, eleven dash eleven. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Just out of curiosity, is the police department or code enforcement gonna be able to force this without any questions?
The chief's not here in the fire department. Uh, chief is not here, so you would have to discuss that with them. But I'm sure they would. The reality of it is, and I sponsored the ordinance, is the reality of it is that vehicles are being stored on properties where formerly, uh, car lots and just sitting there, and they're getting broken to and making the city look like a junkyard. In reality, cars should go in the junkyard and not sit in lots where there's no cars being sold at. Okay? Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
Could Officer Vicari answer that question possibly? I don't know.
I don't know if he.
I can, but I think because I'm not a department head, you're gonna have to vote on that. It's up to you. I'll answer for you though.
We're gonna vote to make you a department head?
I know I'm not a department head. You know the rules.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Ask for suspension of the rules to allow, uh, Police Officer Vicari to give us any comments that he can on this, if he so chooses to.
Is that in?
What happened to Mr. President?
Is that a form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Hinoza, that we suspend the rules to allow Officer Vicari to speak to the council. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote on the suspension of the rule.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Poland.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I actually know which lot you're talking about. We have had some incidents there. Um, we do, of course, have the abandoned vehicle ordinance, which we do have an enforce. There were some problems with that, and I believe there was some lawsuits filed against the city. If, uh, Chris Cantor wants to speak about that. I understand. There was some litigation. Um, if you put this in ordinance, am I going to enforce it? Absolutely. Uh, the particular lot that I think this was aimed at is absolutely an eyesore. As the councilman pointed out, there has been vandalism there, tires stolen there. Um, it's definitely an eyesore, and it's also a danger to neighborhood children in that property. Uh, I can relate to a particular occasion where I did respond out there, where we caught some people stealing tires off of the car, and they're leaving them on cinder blocks. Uh, unfortunately, we could not find the owners of the property or the vehicles. Therefore, we had to let these people go because there's no victim. Um, so, again, if you pass this ordinance, I'll enforce it tomorrow. I would love to enforce this. And I think I do speak on, uh, Chief Miller's behalf on that when I say that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Kowinski.
So Lieutenant Vicari, you're in favor of the ordinance as it reads?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Lieutenant, is there other issues throughout the city besides just this one that we're talking about?
Certainly not to the magnitude of this particular one, but yes, there are other issues out there.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to return back to the regular order of business?
Second.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spatelli, that we return back to the regular order of business. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed. Now back to the eleven eleven. It's been motioned second. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call vote on eleven eleven.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Poland.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Eight in favor and one absent.
President Higgs, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you so much, Clerk Golick. Number nine on the agenda is introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance eleven dash twelve, sponsored by Councilman Opinkar. And ordinance creating a new section to Chapter ninety-four of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to non-residents using neighborhood cleanup dumpsters.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinkar.
I'd like to have the first and second reading on eleven dash twelve.
Second.
Councilman Opinkar, where would you like to refer this to?
Council as a whole.
It's been motioned by Councilman Opinkar, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we move by first and second reading by title, ordinance eleven twelve, and refer to council as a whole. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Item B, ordinance eleven dash thirteen, sponsored by Councilman Henosa. And ordinance to amend ordinance ninety-ninety-eight.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
I move for first and second reading and to be placed in council as a whole.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Hinoza, second by Councilman Markovich, that we move by first and second reading by title, ordinance eleven thirteen, and refer to council as a whole. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote on. Roll call vote on.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
No.
Spatelli.
No.
Kalwinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
No.
Opinkar.
No.
Henosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion fails. Five noes, four yeses.
Item C, ordinance eleven dash fourteen, sponsored by Councilman Henosa. And ordinance to repeal and rescind ordinance number ninety-ninety-eight.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
I move for second, first and second reading of eleven dash fourteen to be placed in council as a whole.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Hinoza, second by Councilman Markovich, that we move eleven dash fourteen by first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
Roll call vote.
Oh, my God. Roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
No.
Spatelli.
No.
Kalwinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
No.
Opinkar.
No.
Henosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion fails. Five noes. No. Five noes, four yeses.
President Higgs, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving right along here. Number ten on the agenda is resolutions. They are done tonight. So number eleven is new and unfinished business, new and unfinished business. Just like to announce the cleanup for the third district will be held April eleventh to seventeenth, and I will be distributing gloves and, uh, paper bags and garbage bags and throughout the community, and I plan to do that in the next couple of weeks, so look forward to seeing me at your door. God bless.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinkar.
Fifth district will also be having a cleanup at Center Four, uh, April twenty-fifth to May second. Uh, there'll be dumpsters scattered through the, the, uh, fifth district. And, um, actually, um, I wanted to mention the mayor's night out is in the fifth district. It's gonna be Wednesday, six-thirty. It's gonna be at, uh, Gavitt High School Cafeteria. Uh, I will have flyers, um, for the cleanup, uh, letting everybody know exactly where the dumpsters are gonna be.
Thank you, Councilman Opinkar.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinkar.
Last week, uh, I got a call from a couple of my constituents, um, about this posting on Facebook by Councilman Hinoza. Um, I don't have a Facebook, but, um, a lot of people out there do. And I'm gonna read you exactly what the letter states. This was regarding.
Wait, hold, 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 hold. I understand you may have a point of view. I hope that the contents of this letter is not to badger or disrespect your colleague. That's all I ask.
No, basically what it is, it's, uh, accusing me of being prejudiced. I am far from being prejudiced. I have African-American friends. I have Hispanic friends, Latinos, Caucasians, Chinese, all kinds of different friends out there. And for Councilman Hinoza to accuse me of being a racist, it really upsets me. I wasn't bought up like that, and I don't expect these comments, what he had said, in regards to me and my family. There were four other colleagues that were targeted on this, called racist, and like I says, he owes us an apology. We are not racist.
Well, one thing for note, one thing for sure, and I'll speak to this, every election is, it's messy people out there that's gonna do all kinds of messy things. So you have to just learn how to have broad shoulders and deal with some of these things because unfortunately, that's part of the process. And, 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 you know, I don't personally do it, but I know there are a number of people that have then attacked the councilman, and I know this is your first time out, but you're gonna have to have broad shoulders to be in this game because I tell you, they do all kinds of mean things to you. So that's just food for thought.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
On a lighter note, March twenty-eighth, two thousand eleven, in Hammond, Bishop Knoll Institute will be holding a community celebration rally to congratulate this year's varsity boys' basketball team on their history-making season and participation in the Indiana two-a state championship. This is the first time in the history of Bishop Knoll that the boys' basketball team has played in the state championship game. The rally will take place on Wednesday, March thirtieth, two thousand eleven, at seven P.M. in the school's fieldhouse. The freshmen will be served in the cafeteria immediately following the rally. All guests are to use the C entrance to attend the rally. Members of the press are welcome and encouraged to attend. Please contact, contact Matt Chico if you plan on covering the event. Uh, my son played on this team, and I can't tell you how excited and proud I am of Bishop Knoll and, uh, Coach Drew Tost for a excellent season. Thank you, and congratulations. Wonderful play.
Congratulations. Would you like to send a letter to them congratulating them?
President Higgs, I would like to send a letter to, uh, Coach Drew Tost and, uh, the principal at Bishop Knoll and vice principal on the, uh, congratulations on a wonderful season and, uh, God bless all.
You put that in a form of a motion for me so we can go ahead and get that done.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilwoman Poland, second by Councilman Hinoza, that we send a letter congratulating the team on a phenomenal, uh, year. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the letter? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed. I'd like a letter sent to Menards congratulating them on the grand opening of the store. And it's a beautiful establishment here in the third district, and I'm really excited about it, and I tell you, um, I'm really, really pleased to see the store finally being up, and hopefully Woodmar, uh, the development at Woodmar will be completed shortly, and then, uh, we'll have some additional stores here in my district. So I, I so moved that a letter be sent to Menards congratulating them on opening the new Menards. It's been motioned by me, Councilman, Council President, and second by Councilwoman Poland. Is there any discussion on the letter? Any discussion on the letter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed. New and unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman.
New and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
Um, in the sixth district, the dumpster cleanup will be from, uh, April twenty-first to the twenty-sixth. Uh, and I also like to comment on that ordinance that was passed, uh, two weeks ago. Uh, uh, it said, in my opinion, I think it was a racist ordinance, and it was mostly directed coming from the first district because of the corn man that's over there. I believe Salinas might have a, uh, ordinance to come out to exclude the corn man. Um, of course, you know, Chico Henosa is not a racist. Chico represents everybody, uh, in the district, and, and I'd be, uh, happy to tell anybody that I voted against that because, uh, myself, uh, I like the corn man. I like to have that corn with the mayonnaise and the, and the chili.
Yeah, I would eat something, yeah.
If you don't like it, uh, don't buy it. I mean, as long as they're, as long as they're licensed and, and they follow the rules, I see no problem with it. But no, definitely, uh, Councilman, uh, Pasalic and, uh, Opinkar and, uh, Spatelli and the mayor, they're not racist. But this is coming from the first district because the Hispanic community is, is rising real heavily in that first district. If anything, we should be concentrating on the crime and the graffiti that's over there. That's what we should be concentrating, not the corn man.
If you wanna concentrate on some, let's concentrate. If you want to concentrate on some, let's concentrate on some of these abandoned properties and not, uh, demo them and rehab them and make them affordable for people to live in. Let's, let's concentrate on that. Hey, I can think of a lot of other things we can concentrate on besides trying to hurt the little man.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Uh, Councilman Henosa, I want to tell you thanks for mentioning that I'm not a racist because I'm definitely not a racist.
Where was I at? I missed this all. When did this all happen?
That was just, mentioned this a second ago.
I'm talking about when did this all occur, though?
Well, the...
Oh, thank you, Allen. I'm sorry. Okay. Go right ahead, Councilman.
No, and I just want to, I'm not a racist, and I think, uh, Councilman knows that. Um, we've been friends a long time, Union Brothers and the whole shot. Back on, uh, the tenth month, the eleventh day of the tenth year, uh, I also gave a hundred dollars along with Mr. Henosa, uh, for the, uh, uh, International, uh, Institute for, uh, Hispanics.
Well, ooh, racism. Do, do we want to talk about racism tonight?
Mr. President.
Oh, my God. I can tell you about racism.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Uh, like, like it says right here, um, "In my opinion," it says, "In my opinion," it's a racist ordinance. It didn't say anything in here that Councilman Spitali is correct. I, I know him well, well, from the, from the steelworkers, uh, union.
Absolutely.
Uh, the steelworkers is one-third, uh, Hispanic, one-third black, and one-third Caucasian, and we all get along together.
Right.
But to me, this was a racist ordinance, uh, coming from the first district. Now, if you want to vote for it and get rid of the corn man, go ahead and vote for it.
What about the tamales? I like tamales, too.
Thank you, uh, Councilman. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Wow, it makes you really think. Got to fight, Chico. You got to fight. New and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
On a lighter note again, um, May twenty-first, two thousand and eleven, the Little Calumet River Fest will take off. And you will get to paddle, bike, or walk the little cow and find out what you've been missing. Uh, the two thousand and eleven Little Calumet River Fest's purpose is to raise awareness of the recreational opportunities along the Little Calumet River. Bring your canoe, kayak, and join N.W.I.P.A. on a ten A.M. trip from Cabela's to Lake Etta, which I checked out today for the first time, and that is a really great park and lake. And, or do your own trip. Rental's also available. Elsie Parks Naturalist Lead Nature Hike at eleven-thirty A.M. Cabela's, lots of stuff for the kids to do. Gary Parks, backyard fishing and other activities. McLurch Kids Adult Fishing. Hammond Parks Foundation cleanup at Oxbow Park. Dog obedience, agility, SAR demonstrations, and dog rescues. LCFG and many other conservation groups will be present at both sites, Cabela's and Lake Etta. Fun food and family entertainment on the Little Calumet River. And I encourage you all to come out and really view this river from a different perspective. It is a beautiful river with much to offer. I did take a canoe trip several months ago down the river, and it was a great experience. And I think, uh, we need to showcase what we have in our backyard. So, I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Poland, for that point of information. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Like to have a letter sent for the city of Whiting, Board of Works, asking for a copy of their garage sales ordinance and ask a specific question when they have garage mahal. Ask them if there's a traffic problem when they have that function.
Why don't you send one to East Chicago as well, in Highland and Munster and Dyer?
We can go ahead and do that. That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Ask them for a copy of their ordinances pertaining to garage sales and ask them if they have a traffic problem when they have garage sales.
Is that in the form of a motion, Councilman?
Yes.
It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich. Is there a second?
Second.
That we send a letter to Highland, Munster, Dyer, Whiting in regards to garage sales and how does it affect their surrounding communities as it relates to garage sales. Is there any other discussion on the letter? Any other discussion on the letter? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, okay. Roll call vote on the letter being sent. Erp?
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic. Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
No.
Opinkar.
No.
Henosa.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes. Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman.
Five yeses, three noes, and one accent.
Let the record show that Councilwoman Pasalic is not in the chambers at this time.
It was one accent.
Let the record show that was Councilwoman Pasalic that was not in the chambers at the time of the vote.
Well, Councilman, you would need to refer that to the chair, and the chair can relay that to the clerk.
So moved.
Clerk Golick, would you please make that part of the record in regards to Councilwoman? Pasalic was not present.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
Perhaps doing a little research beforehand would help because if you go online, you would find that most communities do have ordinances regarding this subject.
Point well taken. Councilwoman Poland. Is there any other discussion as it relates to new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Uh, it's probably been about, uh, I would say at least a year and a half. I haven't heard of any gang graffiti in, in, in Hessville. Uh, it's probably, it's probably been about a year and a half. But, uh, I'd like to send a letter to, uh, motion to send a letter to Chief Brian Miller, uh, to get extra patrols, uh, be- between the streets of Alabama and Parish, between one hundred and sixty-ninth and one hundred and sixty-fifth, for, uh, watching out for gang graffiti.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we send a letter to Chief Miller in regards to extra patrolmen in his district between Alabama and...
Parish.
Parish. Is there any discussion on the letter being sent? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. I'd like a letter sent to, uh, the chief as well, for more police presence between Calumet Avenue and Holman Avenue, uh, the sixty-four-hundred block of Jackson Street. Uh, preferably, uh, more police presence in that area. I so moved.
Second.
The motion by Council President, second by Councilwoman Poland, Councilwoman Poland, that we send a letter to Chief Miller. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
Yes, I would like a letter sent to Chief Miller, Novak in, um, zoning and code enforcement. I have an address at fifteen-eleven Summer. Um, it's a towing business. This guy is selling batteries, tires, and is now storing cars on his empty lot there. And he's building a, um, a deck with no permit. I would like, uh, him to be investigated for all these, um, violations that, uh, it's incurring on this property. I so moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilman Spitali, that we send a letter to Chief Miller regarding the property at fifteen-eleven Summer Street, where they're selling batteries and cars and all kinds of things are going on over there and need that to be corrected, so, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business. New and unfinished business. New and unfinished business is now closed. First speaker of the evening would be Antonio Avridge?
Andrade.
Say it again?
Andrade.
Andrade.
Andrade. It's okay.
Andrade.
Yes. Good evening. Um, I'm Antonio Andrade. Four weeks ago, I spoke to you about the problem of me calling nine-one-one at my residence, and nobody showing up from the police department. Um, it's been numerous times that I did that. It never happened. Uh, thanks to our news media, I come to find out that the last meeting that I did not attend, uh, Mr. Opinkar, um, on behalf of a Hispanic, I apologize for them ever calling you racist. Take it from me as a true Hispanic, Mexican-American human being, nobody would consider you that at all. I apologize on the behalf of a lot of Hispanics. Okay? Um, I come to find out that Mr. Henosa gave some information from Chief Miller. Um, it was a lot of gibberish. I read it here from your Times and Minutes. I have a draft of it. Uh, he mentioned that I am a known gang member of the Saint Disciple gangs out of Chicago, and my nickname is T-Bone. Um, this is some of your best work, Mr. Henosa. Um, you do a lot of good work on Facebook. You forget that also Facebook, that you sent to my son, after my children have been dismissed from the Hammond City Public Schools because my son, Alex Andrade, which also is a father, I'm very proud that he's attempting to run for office. And Mr. Henosa went out of his way to, uh, friend request my son and let him know that to vote, vote for him on May third. And there is on the corner of Martha and Alabama, a free learning center that he can take his brothers and sisters to. Um, as a councilman, as the reason back in October that I told you we were run against you was because of your comments, your arrogance that you did this in the past, okay? I forgive you for your comments. I forgive you for the mistakes that you've done. And I will, if anybody would like to see them, they're right here. We could pass them around, his comments as a professional, as a councilman that represents this whole committee and part of Hammond. That is just unspeakable what you did. To add insult to injury that my kids are not allowed in the Hammond Public Schools because of certain things, they are honor students, they are in a gifted program, and they have a spotless record. It, it's something that's being addressed, and you will probably read about it pretty soon in the Times. Um, you had the audacity to be very unprofessional and bash my son over the Facebook page. Mr. Opinkar, I'm really sorry, but I guess he does his best work on the internet. I wasn't here last meeting. I'm here now. I can answer your questions? No, my nickname's not T-Bone. No, I'm not a Saint Disciple. And yes, if we could put it on the floor, I would like a letter of your gibberish that Chief Miller or Chief Doty gave you claiming all these things. How come I'm not mailed that letter? How come you didn't mail it to me, a copy? I was the one that asked you, why, why don't we have nine-one-one help at our location? And all, all this is gibberish. If you read it, it's not even part of the English language. Would you, would you try speaking while I wasn't here? Shame on you, but I forgive you. But I came here to let everybody know on the panel. No, I'm not related to any street gang that he claims. My name is not T-Bone. Um, I belong to only one family or one team, the Andrade team, okay? We're running for office. We're not doing anything illegal. We're not doing anything, uh, under the law. Unfortunately, yes, I did buy surveillance cameras for my whole house to record everything. In the next nine-one-one call that I make, there is going to be audio and video of how long it takes them to come there. Please notify Chief Miller or Doty or whoever you mentioned that gave you the anonymous letter, that everything is being videotaped in front of my house, outside my house, and the entrance into my house, okay? You talk about being Hispanic. You talk about racism. Do you, did, do you remember the four Hispanic adults on Arkansas you forgot? On October, when they broke into our house? And your words were, which were a couple of swear words. You're on your own.
Can you get to the end of the report? Because we got some more speakers, sir.
I, I understand, but I...
How many minutes? We only got...
I understand, and I, I just want the opportunity and I...
We, we understand your point.
This is terrible. Not only, not only the, what you did is appalling. Mr. Markovich?
Yes.
I have a lot of respect for you because you, you do speak out when, when you know that things are wrong, okay? I hope you're, you can back me up and say, let's send the letter that the chief sent to Mr. Henosa of all this gibberish to Mr. Andrade. He needs it. Let me see it. I don't think any of the chiefs, any professional police department would open up themselves up to litigation over this.
Point well taken.
I forgive you.
Is there anything else you would like to discuss?
Yes, um...
Certainly don't want to cut you off, but I must.
Since then, there was a death threat on my son. We did call nine-one-one. This was last week. Uh, it just came out on the paper today. They broke a window. Guy showed up with a gun. Three, three individuals showed up with a gun, screaming Latin King Love and all that. They, they were standing in front of Alex Andrade, asking who Alex Andrade was for mayor because they were going to kill him and start wearing a bulletproof vest. Does that have to do with anything? Nobody in my house has any politi- police protection at all? Is that what this means? Is that what you're trying to tell your, your whole council here that that's what that means? Nobody at sixty-seven thirteen Arkansas deserves any police protection at all. They can come in and throw a brick that says Alex for mayor through the house window, and the, the hole is still there. And it's okay? The chief doesn't have to show up? None of the police officers have to show up because you claim? Mr. Henosa, I'm addressing you.
Come on.
Okay?
I got to move the meeting on, sir. I don't think, he, he can't, he will not speak in regards to what you're saying because it's public expression. And, you know, we must move the meeting on, so...
Okay.
Anything of relevance to what you want to...
We need protection at our home. The police are not doing anything. And I will constantly record everything. And if I have to send it to everybody individually, you're going to see. And the worst thing that I want is for you guys to end up reading in the paper that nine people ended up dead in Arkansas because we didn't have any help.
I'm afraid that that doesn't...
Thank you. That, that's at, at least what I can ask.
The blood shall never lose its power.
Thank you. I apologize, Mr. Opinkar.
Next speaker, Alex.
Like my father just said, he, I got a death threat last Friday. They threw a brick through my window. I called the police. It took them thirty minutes to get to the house. It happened at one-thirty Friday afternoon. And it took them thirty minutes to show up. And when they did, they didn't really take any fingerprints. They didn't look around the neighborhood. I asked for a neighborhood watch, if someone could come by and check the neighborhoods again afterwards. Nothing was done. And the past week that I've, since then, only about one police car has ever passed by. And I have contacted the federal, uh, FBI because it's nearly two weeks later and nothing's been done.
Thank you, Alex.
Okay.
I'm sorry to hear that, but, well... Lori. Lori, who's on?
Don't know.
Don't know. The C is silent?
The C is silent. We just don't want it to sit at the end of the line. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the council for your quick work in getting the council meetings broadcast. Uh, I commend you for finding a way to provide access to, according to your straw poll, approximately seventy percent of the citizens while saving approximately sixty thousand dollars doing it. Uh, lastly, I would like to urge that the minutes are posted on website along with detailed records of the claims that are paid every, uh, meeting. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kalata King. Carolyn Jackson.
Good evening. I am sure that you will all agree that Hammond deserves safe neighborhoods and economic stability. And I know, you all know, it's time to put your personal power struggles aside and put the needs of the citizens of Hammond first. After today, sitting here listening, at you vote to not even want people here in the city to have two garage sales, I think that is a bit ridiculous. That is not putting the needs of the citizens of Hammond... That is not putting the needs of the citizens of Hammond first. People pay their mortgages, they pay taxes and everything else. It costs money to advertise in the newspaper for a garage sale. If you've ever had a garage sale, then you would know that when you advertise in the newspaper, usually you get two days minimum, okay? In the event that it rains, obviously you can't have a garage sale or yard sale. So therefore, you have a free day to advertise in the newspaper to have that again. Now, I think you need to rethink a lot of these, um, spur of the moment ordinance that you're coming up with, taking the rights away of a lot of our citizens here. We are here to make sure that the citizens of Hammond are protected. I think I would rather have a garage sale being, taking place in my neighborhood than to have the police monitoring how many times you're having a garage sale. I think that's a little bit more important, public safety, than spending our tax dollars and our city dollars on monitoring garage sales. Thank you.
Kathy Har.
Good evening. Okay, um, the council people, you all need to try to get along. And if you all have some personal issues with each other, you should get them solved before you come out here. And, um, someone said something about racist. Okay? It's racist in each race. But once you take the skin away, we all have the same pigment. We should all try to get along. I've been coming to the council meeting for years, and Mr. Henahosa is not racist at all. He does a great job in his district, and you all should try to get along. If someone, the economy is very bad now, and if someone wants to have a vendor, I don't feel that y'all should knock those people because that's the way of some people living. It's a guy that comes down my alley every day, and he gets the stuff and he junking. And when I put stuff out there, I put stuff out there for him because one day he stopped and talked to me. He has five kids, and that's his way of living. He don't punch a clock. So to me, you all, when y'all vote on different things, you need to really think and vote, not for just to be voted, but vote with your heart and your mind. Thank you.
George Stoya.
George Stoya-Robertsdale. Um... I, uh, somewhat agree with Councilman Henahosa that I think some of the measures here are draconian. I don't know that it's, I don't know that you can legislate solutions to some of this stuff. I don't know how you reconcile the need for a tax base to remain healthy on behalf of the city and as well as the needs of people that are having a hard time in this economy from making a, you know, a quick buck. I mean, they're not gonna get rich. Uh, by the same token, uh, like I said, it's hard to reconcile it. I think it's being somewhat politicized because this is an election year. But, you know, that's par for the course. Like, uh, Councilman Higgs says, you gotta have broad shoulders, I guess, if we're gonna play this game. Uh, socially, I think it's a tragedy. But by the same token, I don't think it's racist, Councilman Henahosa. And what I would encourage you to do is have your friends that you feel that are affected by it, file suit. It's the American way. Honestly, I sincerely mean that. I mean, there's not, there's nothing to say that, you know, that it's a slam dunk. These men that have voted for that particular ordinance and the garage sale ordinance, if it's that harsh, maybe, uh, you know, maybe it should be tested. That's what the courts are for. On perfectly legitimate grounds. And I would encourage you to do it. Uh, what I fear more than anything else is this bad blood coming out. And it's gonna fester, and it's unnecessary. And as Councilman Opinkar says, you know? We've all, you know, this is a, we live in a geopolitical area that's culturally diverse. And now, that's a fancy way of saying, I don't think anybody here is racist. But hey, you know, uh, there might, some people may believe, as you said, it's your perception or your belief that it's motivated, it has a discriminatory animus, another fancy way of saying racist. I don't believe it does, but hey, uh, you know, you're entitled to your opinion. But I strongly urge you, and, you know, you can say, oh, this is gonna cost the city litigation. Yeah, so what? You know, it's costing the city maybe if we lose some of our citizens. So, uh, I strongly urge you to have somebody violate that ordinance, and let's sue, and let's see what happens. Take it to federal court, state court, let a judge rule. That's it.
George Janik.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And, uh, Councilman Opinkar, Councilman Higgs is absolutely right about having broad shoulders because there's a lot of interesting things going on out there. I noticed in a paper the other day, Councilman Opinkar, that you gave a donation to the Hammond Police Department for about $150,000 with regards to, you know, making improvements in their training facilities, I believe the outdoor, indoor gun range. Um, and while I applaud that and it's necessary to maintain the high level of professionalism for public safety, uh, on another note, we've also asked you, the residents of the Jefferson School area, to get together with the neighbors and perhaps bring in some professional services from the city engineering department traffic study to sit down and take a look at a permanent situation or solution for the, for the, uh, traffic situation, the intense and very dangerous traffic situation that's taking place around, or has been there, uh, around the school. There's continued reports and I've received calls about near misses where someone, either children or adults, are going to get critically injured. So I ask you again, since that you have apparently, uh, reset or the discretionary accounts have been refilled again at that time, to sit down and at the next available crime watch meeting, get together with the residents of the neighborhood to find permanent solutions with the available resources. And there are some there to take a look at making significant improvements to the traffic situation. We've exhausted a lot of opportunities in having no parking signs on one side and the other side of the street, and talked about one way, uh, in placing one-way signs to make traffic flow in one direction. While they're temporary measures, we need to take a look at something permanent because otherwise there's the potential for having front-page news, and then everybody will be criticized for too little, too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Raymond Fletcher.
Good evening. Tonight, it's Raw is in Chicago, six days before WrestleMania. Me being here should underscore how important it is. Did I say what I said? So it's political season. We have a lot of events going on, and I couldn't help but notice at the mayor's disability breakfast, there were a number of city vehicles there. I too had to work that day, but unlike others who use their city vehicle to get to that event, I didn't get paid. So I'd be curious to know the individuals that were on the clock and eating. Speaking of city vehicles, I was at an RBA meeting today, and I couldn't help but notice a city of Hammond vehicle in the parking lot. The plate number was 69473. Now, it's my understanding that there was no city business going on at the RBA meeting. Just because Hammond has appointments to the RBA does not necessarily mean that that is city vehicle, city business. Much like, um, there were statements and things in the paper about individuals being at the Crown Point Government Complex, I am curious to see payroll records from that day as well, as well as mileage from the vehicle. Did that vehicle leave city limits? And it goes to underscore the need to park city vehicles with gas reaching upward near $4 a gallon. I've seen at school, you all know I work at schools, um, city vehicles drop their kids off. No offense, but, uh, my tax dollars not paying for these people to take their kids to school, especially nearing $4 a gallon. So I would ask y'all just to be mindful as you travel about the city and the different events that go on, take a look in the parking lot. Count how many vehicles have the city seal on them. We wanna talk about savings. We talk about fraud. We talk about waste. What would you save parking these vehicles for a week? Uh, another thing, I've talked to some of y'all about, um, the RBA. You know, as you all know, I've been working on this issue for over three years now. And I told you, you know, House Bill 1366 is, um, changing the RBA. And I've shared some of my experiences with y'all, and I told you this is why you shouldn't have given our buses away. I'm curious, what's gonna happen once the RBA change is over? You know, Hammond has lost its buses. You know, are we gonna be able to provide this vital service to the residents that so desperately need it? I can give you a, for example, this evening on my way here, I was waiting for the 707 on 175th and Columbia. Bus didn't show up. Called First Transit to find out where the bus was. Said they'd be there in about five minutes. It's 28 degrees out. You know, there are bus shelters, I don't know if y'all are aware or not, but wheelchairs cannot fit in the majority of bus shelters. The RBA has been aware of this fact, and yet they still do nothing. Tim Brown so much admitted today at the meeting, we've known about this for two years. We're working on it. Really? It's not that difficult. So the 707 bus didn't show up. So I had to roll my wheelchair up Columbia Avenue and then all 173rd Calumet to try to catch a different bus. They said it'd be there in about 15, 20 minutes. So the 707 bus I was supposed to catch never showed up. The 15, 20 minutes, it took longer. So I ended up rolling my wheelchair from my home to here. Now, i- it's really sad. We have the service, and taxpayers pay so much. I mean, wasn't it this council that just, uh, a couple of meetings ago approved claims that I contacted somebody about? You know, giving it was about $675,000? I need to double-check that number, but to the RBA. And speaking of giving money to the RBA, I don't know if you all are aware of this. Our city controller, the one that signs out the money to the RBA, is now the treasurer for the RBA. So on the one hand, he's signing out this money that this council approved. On the one hand, his city controller, he's signing it out. On the other hand, as RBA treasurer, he's accepting that money. I find it in a conflict. Maybe some of you may not. Maybe this is just business as usual in Lake County. But honest to God, folks, I'm fed up with this. I really wish some of y'all would stand firm and say, you know what? We need to investigate this. We need to investigate, how are we wasting our resources? Because people are right. It is election time, and people aren't gonna call our officials on the carpet for not standing firm. When we're asking our people, our residents, to cut back on their savings, on their expenditures, why can't we, as a city, do so? And on the final note, on this whole garage sale, yard sale thing, I remember as a youth, my grandma coming over on Saturday, Sunday. She'd bake her muffins at home and bring them over, still warm in a Ziploc bag. You know, we'd have our juice and our muffins. We'd sit out there and watch people take our little toys that we played with so long ago. But we had it on Saturday and Sunday because families get together. A lot of times, it's not just one person. It's families. You have the mom, the dad, the aunt, the uncle, the grandma, whomever. Everybody coming together and getting, you know? So it'd be nice to see if it'd be two days because a lot of people really do it in the fall and the spring. So, thank you very much for your time. I hope you look into the issues I raised. Have a fantastic evening and stay warm. I know I'll try to.
Alvin, you didn't sign any?
Yes, I did. If you look at the agenda, I signed in.
I'm looking at it.
I have a...
Oh, number... This looks like some scribble.
Well, I have five...
Alvin Keats, go right ahead, Mr. Keats.
I have five broken fingers, uh, Councilman Higgs. Um... First thing I'd like to say, um, one of the councilmen here, we have something in common that I didn't know until a youth had an issue. The council sponsored a college tour. So I called one of the councilmen, and, you know, he was saying he had to help one of his parents with an issue. So I said, well, you know, at the same time, I give my mother medicine. And so we were chatting. So I was like, hey, it's a couple of young guys, you know, I really wanna help because part of the criteria this year, the young men had to wear ties and they had to wear, you know, they had to go in like they were approaching it like a business. So he said, uh, I'll help. And so we end up helping. But what it turned into that was so awesome is that other businesses and other people contributed, so the youth got a chance to go on a very serious shopping spree. He don't want me to say his name, so I won't. But the strangest thing happened when two of the young youth appeared at the first university, they got accepted. They were so impressed with the young people that a couple of them have already got offers to attend those colleges. So I would really like to thank him. He done it on a low profile, and he didn't do it for any grandeur. He didn't do it from a council checkbook. He done it in a way that those youth knew who he was, and they really appreciated that. And now they have, they're on their second or third college today, I think, and this is the first day. But for him reaching out to those youth, they went in looking like business people, and they have an opportunity to get accepted to a major university. So I thank that particular council person. Um, the second thing I like to talk about is a very serious issue that's, you know, I don't know this family, but I think it needs to be a long table meeting. My family, they call it a long table meeting when people disagree, they sit down and they make the peace. Because we have so many serious issues and people making it seem like other people are doing things. Um, I relate it to the gang graffiti. The number 13 has been paced, in the third district, we don't get gang graffiti. That's a violation. So we received gang graffiti not too long ago. And so I went to Smiley, and I went to all six of the major gangs in our city. I say, why you guys writing on stuff in our district? They say, well, hey, we didn't do it, but we can tell you who did it. So what they're trying to do is create an atmosphere in our city where the gangs are not fighting right now. It's really not going on in our city, but it's other people coming in that don't appreciate the peace that we have in our community. I know Chico very well. I don't know this family. I know other councilmen here. Most of these people, I've ate all different types of dishes. I've been in all kind of situations with them. There's no racism here. I've seen racism, you know? I can tell you about the time I've been shot. I can show you the time I've been cut. I know what racism is. And I take exception to people thinking, you know when you're around a racism. You can invite a man for dinner, or you'll take him to a place you know they'll feel uncomfortable, and then you'll see whether it's racism or not. So I don't, I don't think it's racism. I think people are trying to get their point across, and they're using politics as that. You know, I would like to say, we need to, because there's so many serious things going on in this world, we need to find a way to make peace. And, um, I'm gonna tell them at the end, and I'll tell Chico in front of everybody, that they need to sit down and make the peace because other people will use that peace to create violence in a minority community. You know, and they use that ostriches as they're in a gang. Most of them who say they're in a gang, they typically not in a gang if you know how the rules go. So if you got somebody saying they're a gang, they usually just doing that to bring about a fire. Um, the other thing I like to talk about away from all that is the fact that we do have the council meetings broadcast. I'll tell a little secret that I noticed in one of the ordinance that I brought with me. Anybody can use electronic device. If your phone has a camera on it or it has a recorder, under Indiana State statute, it requires that you can record, you can document, and you can use that device to text. You can Twitter, you can Facebook, because that's a part of the law that exists. So I'd just like to see where it's an even playing field. I spent many years, you know, doing photography and stuff like that. I like to see... I'd like to see that farmed out and let some, you know, some people bid on it or bring some young people in to learn the technology. I'm going to say this, and I'm going to close. Couple of people got caught stealing signs tonight. And I really would wish they would stay out of my yard because...
And stay out of mine, too, Alvin.
You know? In the neighborhood I live in, we do not call the police for stealing signs. So I'm not responsible for you coming onto a property that I own, or the property that I put a sign at, that's my property, too. So I would advise those people who are still... And they even took my ladder because I use my ladder to put up signs. So they left me a little note. So I do appreciate their humor in this little game, but I love it, you know? And I would just caution people about taking signs and, you know, especially taking them from me because now I got to put up 200 signs to make up for the one they took. So please stop, and please stay out of my yard because whatever candidate I put in my yard, that's my choice. And I say this to everybody, signs don't vote. So taking a sign is not going to change my mind about who I like and who I represent. So I would... Those two young men, they let them go. But please, just stop stealing, and whoever wants a candidate or whatever they can. So thank you for your time. And those...
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Request for suspension of the rules and go back to regular order of business.
It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich. Is there a second to go back to...
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we go back to the regular order of business. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, any nays? One nay, motion passes. I'd just like a letter sent to the Park Department in regards to the 5700 block of Lyman. There are two dead trees that's falling over into Lyman Avenue that are very dangerous, and they need to be cut down immediately. So I want a letter to go to Pat Moore in the Park Department and see if we can get those trees cut down as quickly as possible. I don't want one to fall on a property or fall on a car or something. So I still move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Council President, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we send a letter to Pat Moore in regards to the trees on Lyman Avenue and have them cut down at 5700 block of Lyman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I'd like to have a letter sent to Police Chief Brian Miller, what license plate number 69473 is, and if it's a city of Hammond's vehicle, what department it's from, and if it has a city seals on it.
It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Poland, that we send a letter to the police chief requesting what car and who that car belongs to, 6934?
69473.
69473. Is there any discussion on the letter being sent? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed. I don't think we do, but they already know. Can I get a motion now to close out the meeting? It's a motion by Councilwoman Poland that we close this meeting, second by Councilman Kowinski. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Good night.